First order of business, Madam Clerk.
First order of business is oral communication.
The public shall have the opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on our agenda. Oral communication shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council, state their problem without debate, and the matter shall be referred to the proper agency through the office of the mayor. The resident will be notified within a two-week period relative to the disposition of same, and a copy shall be forwarded to the city council. Persons speaking under oral communication shall be limited to three minutes each, and the council president shall not allow complaints as to individual performance. So with that, anyone here wishing to speak in oral communication? Just come to the microphone and name and address for the record, please.
Hello, is this close enough? Is that good?
Pretty, yeah.
Kimberly Smith, Houck, 22 Plum Street, Gloucester. I'm speaking in regard to, on behalf of the piping plover volunteer monitors, we are submitting our short list of recommendations regarding the piping plovers nesting at Good Harbor Beach. Our goal is to have in place by April 1st, 2019, measures and ordinances that will greatly increase the likelihood that the hatchlings of this tiny threatened shorebird will have a fighting chance at surviving life on Good Harbor Beach. Piping plovers began nesting at Good Harbor Beach in 2016. Each year, the piping plovers are coming earlier and earlier. In 2016, they arrived mid-May. In 2017, they arrived at the beginning of May, and this past year, they arrived on April 3rd. It would appear that the same pair is returning to Good Harbor Beach as the male marks his territory and attempts to build a nest scrape only several feet from the previous year's nest at what we call the boardwalk number three nesting area. More plovers than ever were seen at Good Harbor Beach this past spring, and if not for constant disturbances by dogs in the boardwalk number one nesting area, we would have had two pairs nesting on the beach. Why are the plovers arriving earlier and earlier? We can presume that the pair are more experienced travelers, and that they are more experienced parents, and that Good Harbor Beach has become their home territory. Does this mean we will eventually have dozens of pairs of nesting piping plovers? No, because the piping plovers are very territorial, and they will defend a fairly large area, preventing other piping plovers from nesting in their sight. This past year, the piping plover pair hatched four chicks. All four chicks were killed by either crows, gulls, or dogs. All three are human-created issues, and all three can be remedied. The following are the four recommendations and actions we wish to see take place. Recommendation one is to change the dog ordinance to not allow dogs on the beach after March 31st. Currently, dogs are allowed on the beach from October 1st to May 1st. The Piping Plover Volunteer Monitor Group, Dave Rimmer from Green Belt, Mass Wildlife's John Rogason, and Gloucester's Animal Advisory Committee all recommend the dogs should not be allowed on the beach after April 1st, on Good Harbor Beach. This new suggested timeframe will allow birds to nest on the beach as opposed to in the parking lot with far less interruption. Shorebirds will nest earlier in the season, which will help with the chick's survival rate, and the chicks will be stronger by the time Good Harbor fills with summer crowds. This is a very logical and simple solution. Disallowing dogs on Massachusetts coastal beaches where shorebirds are nesting beginning April 1st is the norm. Allowing them to return after September 30th is also very common. For piping plovers and other nesting shorebirds, protecting their habitat and sharing the shore is a matter of life and death. Recommendation number two is to rope off the nesting area by April 1st. Poles with threatened species signs and a triple row of roping of nesting sites to be placed no later than April 1st. Essex County Green Belt's Dave Rimmer will assist with this measure. Number three, enforce the existing ordinances regarding dogs and littering at all times throughout the year. Only enforcing dog ordinances at Good Harbor Beach during nesting season is creating hostility towards the piping plovers. Additionally, we do not recommend extremely high fines, as we feel that may become an impediment to issuing and collecting the fines. Last one is to increase trash collection. When no barrels are placed at the entrances to the beach, people dump bags of trash there anyway. When barrels are in place, people put the trash in the barrels. However, when the barrels become full, they again resort to leaving bags of trash behind, only next to the barrels. In either scenario, gulls and crows are attracted to the trash. Both gulls and crows rip open the bags, and the trash is blown throughout the parking lot in marsh, soon finding its way onto the beach and into the ocean. Hungry gulls and crows waiting for people to leave their trash behind eat tiny shorebirds. Thank you for taking the time to listen to our recommendations. And I just have a question, and wonder if these recommendations can be actionable for the spring 2019 season.
Yes, Jen.
So, Kim, thank you for your comments. I did tell you before the meeting that I will be addressing these issues at the end of the meeting. It is on the agenda. And there have been recommendations that are going to be implemented, at least by the city administration, that were written by the Animal Advisory Committee. So, if you wouldn't mind just staying tuned, that would be great. Thank you.
I'll be at the Animal Advisory Committee meeting on Thursday, right? So, I'll look forward to seeing those. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Kim. Anyone else for oral communications?
Karen Spencer, 67 Langsford Street. Counselors, on January 9th, the Children's Health Defense Team chaired by human rights activist Robert F. Kennedy Jr. issued a statement condemning fluoridation as a forced experiment that must end. It called out U.S. officialdom for its persistent hollow claims that ignore its own research finding fluoridation is a chemical assault on bodies and brains. This statement cited several of the studies presented to you on the contaminated nature of fluoridation chemicals and the evidence of harm to the developing brains of infants in the womb, bottle-fed babies, and young children. The Children's Health Defense Team makes an evidence-based ethical argument like what was presented to this council in 2018. But several of you counselors have made it clear, you don't care about the scientific evidence of damage to children's brains, or the ethics of harming those for whom consumption is medically contraindicated, that you prefer to trust endorsements and offer sympathy to the poor souls who must take extraordinary measures to avoid Gloucester tap water. So let me try to make this more personal for you. Since I've last addressed this council, two powerful studies on fluoride and dementia have been published. An animal study is the first to look at brain damage in rats who consumed fluoride long term. It found several distinct tissue changes in the parts of the brain associated with memory and learning. It also documented changes in brain chemistry. A human study examined the impact of fluoride in association with the medications used to treat Alzheimer's disease. It found that fluoride reduces or blocks the effectiveness of the drugs used to treat dementia. Counselors, it is my opinion that it is utterly hypocritical to pat yourselves on the back for condemning domestic violence or for advocating for the disabled when you have been given the evidence that fluoridation policy is a medical assault on the brains, bones, and bodies of thousands of vulnerable residents, many of whom suffer disability because of a policy that you have the power to end. It is my opinion that environmental attorney Robert Kennedy demonstrates integrity and leadership in his call for an end to fluoridation. Senator Bruce Tar has also demonstrated integrity and leadership. Senator Tar sponsored a bill to study the economic impact of fluoridation policy, taking into consideration the impact on those of us who must avoid this city-mandated drug. Counselors, if the dementia science still doesn't make an impression, let's talk about that economic argument that interests Senator Tar. Since last January, several of us have asked that a standing committee study fluoridation on whatever terms you like: ethics, evidence, environment, or economics. Do it.
Thank you. Anyone else for oral communications?
Hi, good evening. My name, my, excuse me, my name is Philippe Vieira. I'm from Five Stanwood Terrace in Gloucester. I would like to bring forth an idea that I've had. I'm a new resident here to the city of Gloucester, and I was wondering if the city could enforce a debris ordinance. I've noticed I'm a walker, so I've just walked all throughout the city, mostly on your main roads, which is Rogers and Main Street, and I do see parts that are just trash and recycling just littered all over the sidewalks and on people's properties. It really bothers some of them. I really like Gloucester a lot. Its appeal actually brought me here, and because of it, it's so much easier to take care of a city that only has a light pollution, you know, situation to it than something that is like Boston. And trust me, I've been in Boston, I've been in Somerville, I've been in Cambridge. Cambridge's actually pretty good, but still, there's a lot that can be done. And I've reported ICC Click Fix, which is helpful. I can see that actually extending to city services in terms of cleaning. So my proposal is that it bears on the responsibility of property owners to take care of their properties, even if it's not their trash, even if it's not their recycling, because otherwise it just sits and collects. And I've seen, like, pits, basically, where just trash just piles right up, and if you want something done, you have to do it. And sometimes people just don't want to do it, so what happens? If there's enforcement, some type of penalty, that will ensure that the city of Gloucester stays nice and clean, and nothing ends up in environmental areas that could harm habitat. So I truly recommend that the city put some fees together to assess what should people be taking care of their property. For example, if there's heavy mechanical waste that's just lying around, that is not attractive to tourists, so that should be cleaned up. And I feel that if whoever is the property manager does not clean it up, it should be up to the city to clean it then, and then fine whoever's property it lies on. Second, this is more of a post idea, that I think it would be helpful if the city were to hire kind of city cleaners in a sense, people who go out on bikes that have both their recycling bin and also a trash bin to actually bring the debris to the proper receptacles. I know in Cambridge, they have a recycling bin, but that's just to dump the city recycling into. So I'm thinking something similar could be adapted for Gloucester, that you can be very efficient if you have a person on the hour cleaning all the streets in a single swipe, especially Main Street and Rogers. They could just go boom, 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 all the way down. I think it's very efficient, and it saves a lot of time, and it's a way to increase tourism. So that is something that I wish to bring to you, and I hope this does get implemented. I'd really like to see Gloucester, as it is really in state, or put together a clean ordinance, a, you know, a debris ordinance, whichever you like to call it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else for oral communication? Next item of business, Madam Clerk.
The next item is the confirmation of new appointments.
Counselor LeBlanc?
I would like to pull Adam Cookaroo from management reappointments, please.
Well, we're on your confirmation of new appointments.
And send him to ordinance administration.
Oh, this part here. This is where we're at.
We're not going to do the agenda?
We will do that, but first, we're going to do your, okay. Here.
Yeah, yeah, I got it.
Okay.
All right. The ordinance administration would like to recommend that the city council appoint Joseph Orlando to the Capitol Improvement Advisory Board, term to expire 2/14/22. An iso move.
Second.
I don't think Joe's here tonight, but we all know who he is, former city council Joe Orlando, and he is going to work with the administration and set up a five-year or ten-year plan for the Capitol Improvement Advisory Board. So we unanimously appointed him on Monday.
Good, thank you. Any other comments or questions from counselors? A simple voice vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, thank you. Next?
Next, we have Amanda Nash. The ordinance administration committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council appoint Amanda Nash to the Gloucester Culturals Council, term to expire 2/14/22. An iso move.
Second.
And Amanda, are you here? Hi, Amanda. How are you?
Hi, Amanda.
Once again, she was unanimously voted in for the Gloucester Cultural Council.
Great. Thank you for agreeing to serve, Amanda. Any questions or comments from counselors? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, thank you. Congratulations.
Next, we have the Shellfish Advisory Commission. Ordinance administration voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the council appoint Michael Orlando to the Shellfish Advisory Commission, term to expire 2/14/21. An iso move.
Second.
Michael is a representative on the Fisheries Commission, I want to say. So he's been before us before. I didn't feel that was a need to get him up here and reappoint him to another commission, so.
Okay.
Once again.
Okay. And with just a simple vote, a majority vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, thank you. And last?
Lastly, we have Andrew Gossem. Ordinance administration voted unanimously to recommend that the city council appoint Andrew Gossem to the Shellfish Advisory Commission, term to expire 2/14/22. An iso move.
Second. Moved and seconded.
Andrew is here. Andrew works on the Sand Dollar for Tony Gross. He is a commercial lobster man, and he's a commercial clamor, so I think he's going to be a great addition to the Shellfish Advisory Commission.
Great, and having personally observed Andrew and his work, I agree with you, he'll be a great addition. So thank you for agreeing to serve, Andrew. Any others? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, thank you. Congratulations, Andrew, thank you. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Next item is the consent agenda.
Okay, anybody wish to pull anything off of the consent agenda? I'm going to pull off item number one in general, but go ahead for the other stuff.
I was going to pull off item number one under management reappointments, and I'd like to also pull item number one under information only.
I don't see information only. Oh, here? Oh, okay. Yeah, okay. All right, with those removed, I'm sorry. Counselor Cox?
Item, Council Orders, item number three.
Okay. Item number three. Yes, any others? Okay, with those removals, for the remainder, simple majority vote, all those in favor accepting the consent agenda as with the removals, say aye. Aye opposed. Okay, we'll start with item number one.
So we appointed Adam the other day. He wasn't at ONA. I reached out to him, let him know that he should have been there, and just wanted to send him back to ONA to confirm his reappointment.
All right. Do you have another one?
I do. Information only. I just want to recognize Counselor Gilman for being the representative to the Essex North Shore Agriculture and Technical School Committee for a three-year term, so she's going to be representing the city of Gloucester for us, so there's no other person that I would have recommended than you. Not that we did, but, you know, if I had to pick somebody, it would be you. So thank you, Val, for doing this.
Very nice. Thank you, Val. Anybody else, over next to this, Counselor Cox?
Item three on council orders should be for council vote. It's not a referral item. It's not to amend our law. It's a, I don't think it's a home rule petition, but it's a request. It's just a letter from us to the state.
So if we put that on council vote, then we have to see something that we can vote on, right? A copy of the letter or whatever?
Yeah, it's all, I mean, it was all submitted, but it's not a council order. It's not, we're not changing our ordinance. We can't, we don't have the authority to change our ordinance, because it's the state law.
So do you want to do that by council?
It should be on the next agenda for council vote.
On our next agenda, so that counselors have a chance to read it and are ready to vote on it.
Correct.
We will do that.
And the title in the consent agenda says to exclude nip bottles, but it's my order that I put in, or the request that I put in for council vote, is for the redemption to be on nip bottles and single-use water bottles.
And single-use water bottles, right.
So.
Well, if you want to, yeah.
Please read that.
Can amend that for our next agenda.
Yeah, thank you.
Counselor Holmgren?
As a point of clarification, do we need to vote to send Adam Cookaroo back to ONA?
Yes, we will do that.
Oh, we do.
We'll get to that. We'll get to the voting part.
Oh, thank you, okay.
Thank you. Okay, excuse me, Counselor O'Hara.
Microphone?
I'm sorry. Under management reappointments, Public Works Director?
Yes.
Just, I don't know if we can call him to the microphone just for a second? Is that possible?
Sure.
Thank you. Okay. Just regard.
Right. So, excuse me, just in general, I just wanted to take this opportunity before we vote to, to, to finish up, to commend and thank the management folks who are here, who have been reappointed to their jobs. Chip, and Donna, and Bill Sanborn, and James, Michael Hale, Adam Cookaroo, and Nancy Pappas, thank you for your service. And not Adam, because Adam's going back to the committee. Hopefully, he returns to the city council. Thank you for your service, and congratulations on your reappointment. I'd also like to mention that we have also confirmed the reappointment of a couple of dozen members of our boards, committees, and commissions, and also wanted to, the record, to reflect our thanks to them for serving. And I will also just take this opportunity to say that the mayor and I have agreed to co-host a meeting of the boards, committees, and commissions. I believe it'll be the last Saturday in April here in Cairo's Auditorium, a morning's meeting for everyone to get together and kind of be able to hear from those volunteers about their work and just get together with them. So we'll be sending out a notice about that meeting. Okay, so with that, the only thing we need to vote on is, okay, so we have a motion to send the Adams appointment back to ONA, and we are removing Counselor Order Two and make that part of a, for council vote on the next move. So with those, those are the only things we need to vote on, so all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, thank you. Okay, next item, Madam Clerk.
Next item is the Budget and Finance Standing Committee Report of January 17th.
Counselor Cox?
Thank you. On a motion, actually, I would like to preface that Counselor Hect was out of the Budget and Finance meeting, and we had the welcome to Jamie O'Hara for sitting in for us, so thank you, Jamie. Budget and Finance voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council accept under Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, a donation from the Cape and Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution in the amount of $500 for the Archives Department for the purpose of funding the Archives Department Vault Construction Fund in Fund 3318, and iso move.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any commentary on that?
It's an annual donation from the Cape and Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution for the support of the work of the Archives Department.
Great. Any questions? Simple majority, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, thank you. Next?
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend that the city council, in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 64, approve payment of a prior-year invoice for a Gloucester police detail for DPW roadwork invoice 18267DV dated 6/26/2018 for a total of $528 from fiscal year 18 to be paid with fiscal year 19 general fund DPW public service police detail account budgeted funds, and iso move.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any comment?
It just came in at the end of the year.
Yep. Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, thank you. Next?
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend that the city council accept under Mass General Law, Chapter 44, 53A, a Mass Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs FY 19 and 20 Planning Assistance Grant in the amount of $28,790. Funds are to be used for the purpose of updating the city of Gloucester's 2010 Open Space and Recreation Plan. The grant period expires June 30th, 2020, and there is a 40% in-kind match in cash match for this grant, and iso move.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any commentary on that?
It's to update the Open Space and Recreation Plan.
Great, a simple majority, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, thank you. And lastly?
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend that the city council accept under Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, from the Massachusetts Marine, Division of Marine Fisheries, a 2019 Great Marsh Green Crab Trapping Program grant in the amount of $12,500 for the purpose of funding a program to capture and remove European green crabs from coastal marine and estuary, estuarine water within the Great Marsh ecosystem to improve shellfish, eelgrass, and other fishery resources within the city's jurisdiction. The grant period expires June 30th, 2019, and there is no required local match, and iso move.
Trap those European green crabs. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any more of a story than that?
It's pretty clear.
Okay.
Money to trap crabs.
Right.
It's a good thing.
It's a good thing. Okay, so all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, thank you. Next item, Madam Clerk. Next order of business?
Next item is the Ordinance Administration Standing Committee Report of January 14th.
We don't have any matters this evening.
Okay, next item?
The Plan and Development Standing Committee Report of January 16th. No matters to report under the setting.
Okay, next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Next order of business, the public hearings.
Yes, so we will take the, these are three public hearings to do with the same basic concept, the amendment of the Gloucester Crossing Special City Council Permit. So there are three, one for, two, one is for a drive-through facility in what, the second one is also for a drive-through facility, and the third one is for the replacement of the hotel and with these, with one of the buildings that we're going to be talking about. So why don't we take public hearing 2018 double, or... So, why don't we take Public Hearing 2018-068 and Special City Council Permit 2018-007 first, which is the...the request, the application for the removal of the hotel, which sets the stage for the others. So... Ms. Harrison, name and record for the...Address for the record, please?
For the record, my name is Michelle Harrison. I am the Special Permits Project Manager for Sam Park and Company for Gloucester Crossing. With me tonight are Mr. Park, Sam Park here, who is the owner of Gloucester Crossing and of Gloucester Commons LLC, which is the property owner, and Tim Power, who is our civil engineer, our professional engineer. It's exciting to say that it's time to complete Phase Two of Gloucester Crossing. You've seen Phase One, which is Market Basket and Marshalls, the beginning of Gloucester Crossing. And this is Market Basket here and Marshalls here, and then some stores here. Now, in Phase Two, you have, and you probably see this...seen the steel that already is going up. This whole area in this back area is...not a back area, the other area, is Phase Two. This large building is the Home Goods Building that is under construction right now. There'll be additional buildings here. I will talk about the modification itself, but it does affect this building, which was the hotel location. This building has just been kind of separated with this driveway in between here. You've seen Aspen Dental already under construction here with the big iconic roof. And there's our roundabout here. So, are we talking basically tonight about Phase Two of Gloucester Crossing? I don't want to make this more complicated than what it is, but it is basically, it's a downsizing. There's a significant reduction in gross square feet and a change to a less intensive use. The requests, we think, are reasonable and recommended after extensive review by the planning board and by your P&amp;D committee. The special permits that we're going to be looking for are three. As the council president read, the first one is the modification of the special permit. This isn't a new special permit. It's a modification for the permit that was granted back in 2007, 2008 for Gloucester Crossing. So, what we're doing under this modification are a couple of things. One is to eliminate the hotel. So, here we have, as I said, the hotel. Could I see the overlay, Tim? This was...Here in blue, you can see what was originally approved. This was the footprint for the hotel. And we don't want a hotel...Gloucester doesn't need a hotel anymore. This was a large hotel with a...well, a hotel of 100 rooms. And now, we have a full-service hotel with the Boport Gloucester to satisfy that need for us. So, we're asking to eliminate the hotel, change the footprint of Building E, which was the hotel here, and convert it all to retail. We also...This is Building C. Well, it starts way here and it comes all the way to the end of this building, which we're now calling C2 because it's going to be separated from the main part of Building C with a...what will, we hope, be a drive-through, but it's a 43-wide driveway is what is contemplated. So, you see that what we're looking for under the modification, a change, get rid of the...eliminate the hotel, change that to retail, change Building C so that you can have a freestanding building and do some changes in the parking field here. That we have...Some of the islands are moved around a little bit to facilitate the new parking plan and the new uses in this area. And also of import is the roundabout because I think we've all gone into Gloucester Crossing and you've seen the tire tracks that have gone over the landscaped island in the middle. And what this proposes to do is eliminate that by shrinking the size of the landscaped island. Right now, the landscaped island is 40 feet in diameter. It's going to be 20 feet in diameter instead. But that extra area around the landscaped island is going to be a grooved pavement of a different color. So, it'll be a bright red, actually, so that the cars will know that they're supposed to go around a certain way. But the trucks are going to have that additional width to be able to circumvent the roundabout. So, those are the first major changes. Also, we are here, as the council president said, looking for a special permit for what was the hotel, which is going to be retail and have a drive-through there. And the third special permit application before you is for a coffee shop at the end of Building C. That little one that I said was separated off is now called Building C2. For me, the presentation will be short, shorter and precise as the planning board gave this...these three items extensive review, stressing the necessity and availability for safe and adequate pedestrian access, given the anticipated pedestrian traffic that will be coming from the Fuller project. And I will talk about that as well. I would like you to note that in the original special permit, certain parcels of land were supposed to be conveyed that Mr. Park owned on the...near the Fuller site, which they've been referred to as the hockey stick. But here's Gloucester Crossing here. This is Fuller. This is where the sign is now for Gloucester Crossing, the big sign. But all of this has...Part of it has gone through the planning board. This whole piece has gone through the planning board. It's now separated as its own lot and will be conveyed through a process to the Fuller Mixed Use Venture, as you know through the Fuller permitting that that was going to happen. Over the years, there have been some historic modifications to Gloucester Crossing already. They are in the material that we submitted with our application. I can go through them if you'd like. But the major difference that we have right now is that this application for a modification was determined according to the process in the special permit, where the planning director and the building inspector had to look what was requested and determine whether it was a minor modification, an insubstantial modification, or one that needed the council's full review. They determined because of the elimination of the hotel, the reconfiguration of two buildings and the possible drive-through that this was not insubstantial, but should go through the full process for a modification of the special permit. Thus, we are here. This...So, why no hotel, as I mentioned? We have the Boport Gloucester. And with no hotel, this truly is a matter of downsizing. By removing the hotel, we're doing a couple of things. The traffic decreases because if you have a hotel, you have increased traffic more than you would with 10,000 square feet of retail. We're removing a four-story building and instead having, like the rest of Gloucester Crossing, a one-story building. Again, you're seeing less. By providing this additional retail, we will have...be able to confirm leases with tenants who are close to lease signing and just waiting for these new configurations. So, if...Again, if you look at those downsizing, you know, you can see... It kind of puts it in perspective with the whole project in that we're eliminating the four-story building. We're eliminating the underground parking that you may remember was suggested for underneath the hotel. So, by eliminating that underground parking, you're also eliminating a major topography change as well. We're reducing the traffic because retail is less than a 100-room hotel. And there's also reduced impact on the infrastructure. The hotel clearly isn't going to use the same amount of water as a hotel. It's not going to have the same impact on the sewer. So, we also have this downsizing, this reducing of infrastructure use. And again, just talking in square feet, that the gross square footage of the hotel with all four stories was 52,000 square feet. And now, with this building H here, it's just about 11,000 square feet. So, again, this is less. It's not more. The utilities are all in place. They were all master-designed back when this was approved in 2008. And the stormwater management plan...of stormwater management is already in place, working well. The impervious area with this change stays just about the same, about almost 32%, 31.5%. Compliance with the parking requirements is also satisfactory. We're meeting the number of parking that's required. The islands, as I said, are still landscaped islands. They've had to been changed a little bit on the parking field, but they still are going to be landscaped and they're going to have the lighting that the city wants, with the cutoff lighting with no spillage. So, you also...I know always consider traffic and the traffic impact study was provided with the application and was reviewed by the planning board as well. And it outlines that the traffic demand is, as I stated, with a hotel. It is...Without the hotel, it's less than it would be with the hotel and the retail doesn't use as much as a hotel. The important summary was in the traffic report that proposed modifications do not significantly impact the traffic flow. And importantly, all changes are internal to the site, which means no impact to 128 or to the neighborhood. It's all internal. The planning board made their positive recommendations after intense review of all the items and with Mr. Park's cooperation, gave special attention to the pedestrian access. And I'd like to talk about that a little bit because it was a major focus of the planning board and also of the Planning and Development Committee. Tim, can you make this just a little bit bigger or is that it? No? Okay, that's okay. I think this is big enough. This is your entry, the driveway that goes down to the roundabout. Right now, this sidewalk here is in existence. And you can see how it will meet the crossing that is proposed on the Fuller site. So, you have a crosswalk here. You have a crosswalk here that... And you have the sidewalk that goes all around this way. We are proposing to add another crosswalk so that you can get from here, cross over here. And this is a new access, which I will also talk about. But here, the planning board suggested that we have another crosswalk. So, if somebody came around this way from the YMCA, they'd also be able to cross here. There already is a stop bar there. And so, they would be able to cross here as well. And then, this is a new entrance to Gloucester Crossing this way. So, if you're a pedestrian, you will cross here, cross there, cross here. You've got those options. And then, this is a paved area with some stairs. And the stairs go up. And then, this is a sidewalk that runs parallel with the back of this building here. And then, right here, there's a resting area. There'll be a bench. And then, you've got a choice. Once you get to the top...I think you know where I mean. You know, this is quite steep right here. So, we didn't want people scrambling up the...up that hill. This is a safe access now. And you will cross on this sidewalk here. When you get to the top, then you have a choice. If you want to go to what we hope is the coffee shop, you would go this way. If you wanted to go what we hope will be a pharmacy or other retail here, you will cross this sidewalk, this crosswalk here, and you could go to this store. The planning board encouraged and we complied with, if you want to get over here to the Aspen Dental or the other tenant in here, there's a new crosswalk that will give you direction across from this building to this building, from this building to this building. So, you have a lot of intention played, not just to getting to Gloucester Crossing from the Fuller site, for example, but internally as well. All marked with pedestrian crossing signs. The crosswalks are all at stop bars so that you have safe pedestrian access internally. If you...We go to our next slide. You can see this is kind of what this looks like. This is what I just explained, going up. This is the concrete part and the stairs and going across the sidewalk, resting here or not, and then going up the...these additional stairs. This is what it looks like. You're here at the driveway. You come this way, walk up a few stairs. There's an even area. Walk up a few stairs like this. When you get to this top area, this is what it looks like over here. Attractive, a bench, landscaped, and it provides good pedestrian access for folks. The major project modifications, as I say, have been recommended by both the planning board and the P&amp;D committee. They both made the finding that these proposed uses... These proposed modifications, rather, will be in harmony with the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance and they will not have adverse effects which overbalance the beneficial effects either on the neighborhood or the city. The standards were all reviewed by both of those reviewing boards. I'm happy to go over them all or I could just give them to you in brief. What's your pleasure? Brief? You know these as well as I do under chapter after section 1.8.3. The first one is the social community and the social, economic and community needs. I think they're obvious from the construction and teneting of Phase One. The stores are busy. There have been consistent tenants who provide service, convenience, retail, employment and an increased tax base to the city. With Phase Two, we expect to see more of the same. And there's no demonstrated need for a second hotel, another large hotel in the city. The second criterion for the council to consider is traffic flow and safety. And as I've just spent some time showing, a lot of attention went to making sure that this traffic flow, especially for pedestrian, works both on-site and to the...to the center itself. Our traffic is reduced with this plan as opposed to when there was the hotel. Utilities were discussed during the initial permitting and significant improvements to that area. The utilities in that area were made. They were master-planned at the beginning to anticipate Phase One, Phase Two and other developments. So, they're all adequate. The DPW director has reviewed the plans and found in a memo to the board and to the council that he had no issues with the proposed minor modifications. Neighborhood character and social structure are appropriate for this proposed modification. Again, the removal of the hotel use is going to be...have less impact on the neighborhood and the social structure than what we have. The buildings are all consistent in size and scale. The impact on the natural environment was vetted extensively during the original permitting with a...with an order of conditions, some protection of the wetlands and mitigation at that time. With this modification, the conservation agent suggested in a memo to you certain concerns he had. Those concerns were addressed at P&amp;D and at planning. And at P&amp;D, they suggested some new conditions that are Conditions 33A, B and C when we talk about the conditions. The suggestions of the Health Department were all satisfactorily addressed at the planning board review. I would like to add one thing. When we talk about the conservation, back here, we have a little plaza. Do you have another? Oh, those are our elevations of what the buildings will look like. This is that little grassy area in the back by Marshalls. And as you may remember, during our permitting, the ward counselor was Gus Foot. And he was a strong advocate for this proposal. And Sam always promised him a pathway and a little plaza here. So, here it is. There...It will be landscaped. There are some benches. So here it is, there, it will be landscaped, there are some benches as well as this pathway. So we just wanted to remember him. The guidelines for shopping center under section five, seven, five are all outlined in, in the application. I don't think I need to go through them now, we meet them all. So I am happy to address any that you may have a question, but they were satisfactorily addressed and found in the planning board memo. I do want to clarify that the, the special permit modification does not revoke any of the conditions that we had originally in our first permit in, in the council's decision. Those conditions still stand. I suggest, I didn't think it necessary in the conditions that were suggested for you to restate them all over again, but it was decided, yes, that we should restate a lot of them all over again. So I just would like you, if you could, when you do it, to make a special note in your decision that the, many of the conditions are restatements and then just list the, the conditions that are new or revised. The ones in the list that the planning board had recommended, the new ones are condition one, two, fourteen D, fourteen E, eighteen, twenty-six, thirty-three, A, B, and C, thirty-eight, thirty-eight A, and thirty-nine. Those are new ones and there are just a lot of conditions in there. And it, for a title examiner who has to look at all these documents at some point, he will have to go, he would have, or she would have to go back and look at them, is this a new one, not, this would just make it easier for somebody later on to see what is new. And then when the council does, after your deliberation, review the, the conditions, I, I do have a comment on thirty-eight A that I would like, that I'd like to comment on. That's it, any questions? I will answer them, Tim can or Sam can.
So a couple of things since, just for the council, that since this is a little bit complicated here, we have three speci, three separate special permit applications, essentially though they're all about the same thing. And Ms. Harrison has just presented a kind of an overview of, of all three. And that's why we gave her a little extra time because it's three separate special permits. And when we get, we'll, we'll consider them separately and we'll vote on them separately. But in terms of understanding what the applicant is asking us, it's pretty much all of a piece. So before we go on in our usual method, which is other people to speak in favor, other in opposition, before we get to that part, I would like to pause here and ask counselors if you have any questions at this particular point about what has been said so far. So Counselor Cox.
Is it not possible to open all three public hearings? I mean, vote separately, but open them all so we don't have to go through the individual process of doing that since we're talking about them all together anyway? The votes will be separate, obviously, but to just kind of...
Well, I guess we could do that if, I mean, we're, we're doing it.
Like the, the will of the committee, I mean, it seems like it would be the most logical thing to, to do is to open them all three up.
So without, without objection, we'll consider all three public hearings open, which will allow us to talk about all three of them, will allow for the applicant to address any specific items on the others. Will allow anybody speaking in opposition, if for instance, someone objects to the coffee drive-through, they can speak to that.
So would you like me to talk about the two drive-throughs now too?
Yeah, you might as well, and if you're, if we're pausing here to just do some procedural stuff. If you wanted to present whatever else, other factual situations besides the ones you've just said, which kind of overlay everything, on the specific two drive-throughs, you could give us your description of those and then we'll ask counselors if they have specific questions before we move on to asking for other people's supporting, et cetera. Okay, go ahead.
Again, where, I'll talk about the retail drive-through first. This is where it's going to be located and the, Tim, do you want to put the plan up? This will explain it a little bit better for you. It's interesting, ten years ago, when the Gloucester Crossing was first approved, there was a drive-through that was approved for a bank. And at some point, we said, well, we don't really need a drive-through for a bank. And here we are again with a retail, a application for a retail drive-through. This, we think, could be a bank, it could be a pharmacy, some kind of, of retail. This is right at the corner where I showed you the hotel was going to be with a retail. When you look for a drive-through in section five, seventeen, five, there are certain standards that you have to show. One is to consider the traffic and that's what we've done here. This was that stairway, I told you, if somebody wants to walk, they would walk in this way. That's that little resting area and steps coming up here. And they would cross over this way. This, uh-oh. I'm really going to talk fast now.
Yeah.
This, when you have a retail drive-through, you have to have a minimum of three, in your queuing lane, in your stacking lane, that you need to have three spaces. That we are providing in here, five spaces for queuing. This, if you have gone to the CVS in East Gloucester, it's a similar arrangement there. With retail, you don't need a order board because people just go right up to the window and pick up the prescription or make their deposit, whatever it is. There are also, instead of three spaces to queue, we have five spaces to queue. This is a pass-by lane, which is very wide, it's actually seventeen feet wide, and it will circumvent around this way. Sorry for the...
Go ahead.
Okay. When you do have a pass-by lane, it has to be, according to our standards, it has to be marked to separate the two. They recommend something, just a stripe could do it, we have some crosshatching here instead, in addition. What you also will find here that came up at the planning board and at P and D, is that there are four parallel parking places there. And parallel places, especially if they're on the left, can be kind of hard to get in and out of. And so those four parking spaces, a condition was suggested at, at P and D that those be limited to employee parking. So they're not going to interfere with the drive-through, they're not going to interfere with the pass-by lane, they're a little hard to get in and out of, but they will be noted just for employee parking. The, I said that there's no need for service equipment, there's no need for floodlighting, it's, it will be lit just as it is on, in the, the parking lot. When you have a drive-through, there's always a discussion of operation and security. And there is a full-time security company at Gloucester Crossing. They use a lot of different methods to monitor what is going on there. The hours of operation, we anticipate for the retail site. He does this all the time to get everybody to go, oh, look at my kids. The hours of operation are expected to be between eight AM and ten PM for the, the retail. One thing I think that distinguishes this retail and the coffee shop one that we'll talk about, is that it's all internal. You don't have to worry about the queuing lanes going into Washington Street or another street, because it's all internal on the site. You're not going onto a main street, so you're not blocking any traffic on a thorough street. So that certainly is an advantage here. I'm not going to go through all of the standards, you know, that I would normally talk about, except to remind you that drive-throughs are great for people who are disabled, or they have kids in the car, or it's pouring rain, or for any number of reasons, they've got the flu and they're going to pick up their flu medicine, why a drive-through is almost essential for a lot of stores now. That's all I want to say about the retail unless, okay. The other drive-through is, this is what it looks like from the outside. Sorry, I turned, I've gone way off schedule here. Our other drive-through, this is at the end of building C. This is the, the coffee shop. Before, I had said, if you have a retail, you have to have three parking spaces, we provide five. If you're going to have any kind of food in your coffee shop, you need to have five spaces, queuing spaces, we have ten. So you have plenty of time as you're going through there to just, just wait without getting into the parking lot. There are enough spaces. You also have, in the beginning, there will be just a board so you can kind of decide what you want to have, couple of spaces more forward, then you would make your order, few more spaces forward and then there's the pickup window so that it moves along that way. Because it's such a long queuing line, that if you wanted to, I can't wait that long for my latte, espresso, grande, something, then you can just get in the pass-by lane, which is again delineated with, with a line, with some crosshatching and with a, a median as you get up closer to the takeout window. So it's been well designed, there'll also be some outdoor seating here. And this is your crosswalk that does, yes, it does go in front of the, the pickup line, but it's well, there are lots of signs, pedestrian crossings, stop signs to provide that protection. New world's record for me to do it that fast.
Very good. Would you also care to comment on the, the condition that you mentioned earlier about the crosswalk and the walkway? Just so everyone has that factual picture and then we'll...
Yes.
...open it up for questions.
And I have to take responsibility for this, for not reading it carefully, Mr. Lundberg, because condition thirty-eight A, as proposed, states that the pedestrian walkways leading up to the Gloucester Crossing site at the main entrance shall, at the main entrance, I assumed meant this one that I talked about, shall be completed prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy and the languages for either of the C two or E buildings. And I wanted to be clear that, I mean, because it's clear whether one gets to choose, do I want C two or do I want E? But I was unaware of the construction sequencing when this condition was proposed. And right now, this is building E and this is where the construction is. The staging for both is going to be at the same place. So that will, it's difficult to have staging, you know, for, for both, two jobs, different jobs going on at the, the same time. And also with the construction of building C, you're going to have excavation, a lot of earthworks as well as the, the construction. So I don't, and we anticipate that the coffee shop is going to have its request for an occupancy permit probably in late spring, early summer. So there's no way that this can get built. This one will be open before this is possible to get built. So I'm, we're, Mr. Park is fine to say that, you know, that this will be done before the occupancy permit for this building, which is this E building. But it just, it's, and I wasn't aware of the construction sequence and so that's my request.
Understood. Yes.
No, this is E. E is in... No, this, this is E and this is C. So C will, C two will be done before and occupied before the retail drive-through. So I would like the condition to say, the occupancy permit, that this entrance will be completed before the occupancy permit for E as in Edward.
E, and, and that we strike C two from that particular condition? Okay, we'll get, we'll get to those details, but yes, understood.
Thank you.
Okay, so is that it?
That's it.
Okay, so now, I'm going to ask, before we move on to other people in speaking in favor or opposed, I'd like to ask, open it up to questions by counselors on the, on what, what we've been presented so far. I know this is very, there's a lot of detail here. Counselor Gilman and Holmgren and I have had the benefit of sitting through a couple of P and D meetings plus a site visit. So for us, we already know pretty much what is being spoken of, but for others, you may not. So counselors, any questions for the applicant right now? Counselor Cox? Okay.
With the stair access from the other property to the existing property, I imagine bicycles will be traversing that as well. And with it only being stairs, is there no possibility of a, a less stary?
There would be the sidewalk.
Okay, but you would have to go all the way around?
You'd have to go around that way, yes. Tim looked at, our engineer looked at this a lot, we can't do a switchback like they did for a little bit here...
Right.
On, at the Fuller School, because this is just so steep and you'd have to switch back, you know, go, it would be long and it would be many and it wouldn't be effective.
Because as it is right now, it's not, it's also not handicap accessible because of the stairs.
Yes. And again, if somebody is in a chair, they would go this way. There's, it's just too steep, it can't be done. And if you had to do so many switchbacks, it would be the same, probably the same distance as going on the sidewalk.
Laser, point me through how I would access if I was on a bicycle, if I wanted to go to CVS.
From the Y?
From the Y to CVS.
This is the sidewalk from the Y.
Yep.
And if you're on a bike, you'd take this little switchback here, you'd cross this way and you'd go this way. And there's a, a crosswalk right here and a sidewalk here.
There is a crosswalk there or there will be?
There is, but you know, you can't see it because it's gray. And initially, we wanted to have the sidewalks look like granite, you know, the crosswalks look like granite, but you can't see it with the gray. So, he chose the wrong color. So these are all going to be red. These are going to be red. And they're all going to be red just as around the circle, which is why a lot of cars and, and trucks miss the roundabout because they, it's the same color as the street. So that's going to be highlighted.
Well, I think the original intent of that entrance versus coming around behind market basket was for the trucks, but for the trucks to not be taking that shorter route and not be taking the upper entrance off of one-twenty-eight versus off the rotary. That was my understanding of reading through the original city council special permit.
And first we had, as you, you probably remember, we had a four, three-legged intersection.
Right.
But then it was felt that the traffic would flow better, but the size wasn't right around the, the roundabout.
So when we're talking about condition, was it, good lord, I forgot what condition it was with the...
The one I just talked about?
Yeah.
Thirty-eight A.
So thirty-eight. So the completion of the rotary, the internal roundabout is going to happen prior to this. So that way, if I am on a bicycle and I want to go from Fuller that, sorry, from the Y to, that, that's going to be done prior to...
We anticipate that these will probably both be open before the Y is open. So there's, you know, you... So there's, um, you know, you-
I'm talking more about the, the internal roundabout there-
Around here.
-that that construction is going to be done prior to, prior to CVS.
About the ice. Certainly, that can be done sooner.
Okay.
Yeah. And I think there's a condition, I can't remember, um, that says that landscaping's going to be done within a certain time, but we certainly can give it preference, Melissa.
Okay, I just, you know, for safety's sake, instead of having people try to traverse the stairs and everything, that that be kept a priority. I have more, but we can take turns, Paul.
Okay. What do you want to do? Counsel LeBlanc, you had a question?
Yes. I just need a clarification. So on the minutes from P and D last week, Condition Number Five for the, the road maintenance agreement.
Five?
So, yes. So I'm going to read from the minutes and then I want to read from the council permit that's already existing. So on Condition Number Five, it says, "This condition was reviewed," which describes "The city shall have no, shall have, not have any legal responsibility for the operation, maintenance, repair, or replacement of certain physical infrastructures within the project and the layout of Gloucester Crossing Road and Gloucester Crossing, and Gloucester Crossing Road." And then if you go down a little bit, it says, it says, "The roadway agreement," saying that the original roadway maintenance agreement was for five years. And you advise, it says that Mrs. Harrison advised, "The internal roadway maintenance, the applicant understands that is his obligation, but that Schoolhouse Road," remember that, "and that Gloucester Crossing Road are municipally-owned roadways."
Right.
So then if I jump back to the original permit, it says, "Upon final paving, Sam Park and Company will provide the DPW with the cost of installation, including labor and materials for the top coat of the asphalt of Gloucester Crossing Road and Schoolhouse Road. That amount will be deposited in interest bearing escrow account for the amount equal the consumer price and have, for up to 15 years, provide 15, year 15, provide repaving if the repaving costs more."
And what are you reading from?
That is from the original permit. So it says that Sam Park and Company is excluded, that Gloucester Crossing Road, every municipal roadways. But then in the beginning of this, it says, "The shitty, the city shall have no legal responsibility for the layout of Gloucester Crossing Road." So, I mean, I'm just confused. Is it a municipally-owned road or is it a Sam Park and Company-owned road? And who's responsible for the maintenance?
Gloucester Crossing Road and Schoolhouse Road are municipally-owned. They're city roads. There was a roadway maintenance agreement that was part of a, the host community agreement that was all tied to the TIF at that point.
Yeah.
And-
And for how many years was that for?
When I said five years, that was for the lighting, but it was for 15 years. And, but there were certain things that would trigger it earlier.
Mm-hmm.
One of those things was when Fuller was no longer used for municipal use.
Correct.
But Mr. Park has been paying for the snow removal now and, and all of the road.
So he's been paying for the snow removal?
Yeah.
How about the, how about the account where it's available for 15 years for repave, to provide repaving? Has that been, and that, to put in escrow, has that been?
It's in the roadway maintenance agreement.
It is.
Not in the special permit.
Okay.
I'm not sure. I'd have to look it up, but I thought that was in the roadway maintenance agreement.
That's the draft roadway maintenance agreement? Yes. I think that's what you're reading there. It's not-
That's for the roadway agreement.
Right.
Right.
That's not the special permit.
Yes, but on Condition Number Five, it talks about this roadway agreement in Condition Number Five.
Right.
I'm just, I'm just confused on who's going to provide maintenance for these, these roads if we don't have a roadway agreement for, for these here.
You have one for 15 years. You have an agreement for 15 years. But could, can get triggered earlier under that roadway agreement if Fuller School is no longer used for municipal use. And then the roadway agreement talks about after that.
Right. So triggered means what to us?
That it's not the responsibility of Gloucester Commons anymore.
Okay, but it says also that the obligation, that the Fuller School property, if the property is used for commercial, business, or residential use during that 15-year obligation. So isn't that, what this is, isn't that what we're switching to?
At Fuller?
Yes.
It's a commercial use, yes.
All right, I'm just, I'm, I'm still not following this.
And I'm, the reason is because it has a lot of parts. And the roadway maintenance agreement is not part of the application that's before us tonight. We're looking for a modification of the special permit for three reasons. One, to reconfigure Building E. One, to reconfigure Building C and to change the parking areas, is to change the parking field. That's what's before us for the modification of the special permit.
So, so the original special permit, the original host agreement and the original road maintenance items are still in effect and aren't impacted one way or the other about these three applications tonight? Those obligations all still exist and are still present.
Okay, can I, Counsel Gilman wanted to touch base with this. Can I, through the chair, ask her, her thoughts on this?
So I, I just wanted to be clear because this was confusing in the meeting. It was presented that Section Five, or this Condition Five, was different.
When you say Condition Five, can you identify Condition Five of what? Not-
Okay. So when we were discussing a Condition Five of the 2007 special permit.
Right.
The factors that were listed on that were exactly what was presented at this meeting. So there was a little bit of confusion because I pulled out the old Section Five and read it and it was exactly what we were presenting. So we had a long conversation about this section, which really didn't need to have a conversation. What the real conversation was, was Condition Number Thirty-Nine.
Thirty-nine, yeah.
Okay, so that, so, so we came to the realization at that point that, that this was, because I had the, the old special council permit in front of me. So it probably could have been noted a little bit more clearly on the minutes, that that's what happened.
Okay.
So we prematurely began talking about question, Condition Thirty-Nine early in the conversation because there was really no change to that. So I don't know if that helps you understand a little bit?
Right. So, Counsel LeBlanc? I mean, you don't have to be totally satisfied right now. Do you have another question for applicant? We can come back to this too.
I'll wait to listen to everybody else.
Okay.
I'm not satisfied, but I'm, I'm listening.
Anybody else have any questions for the applicant right now? Okay. Oh, Counsel O'Hara.
Thank you. And this, this may tie in with what Counsel LeBlanc, as far as the, the sidewalk that you have noted going up to, on the parallel-
This one?
No, no, this.
Oh, this one.
Yes. Now, who, you're going to build that, obviously.
Yes.
Who's going to maintain that?
It's on Gloucester Crossing property, so we will maintain it.
Through its life?
Through its life.
Okay.
Just as Gloucester Crossing maintains this road and all the interior work.
As far as the lighting along the, really the entire project, obviously tying into the potential future projects, the YMCA, if you will, will the street lighting be improved?
I don't know if it will be improved.
Because right now, I would consider the lighting pretty poor.
Again, that's a municipal street.
Mm-hmm.
And that we have lighting here on the driveway-
Sure.
-in, that Gloucester Crossing's responsible for is part of the same document that Mr. LeBlanc was talking about. It talks about lighting, not the installation of it, but who's paying for it.
Understood. But right now, this is your project.
This is our project.
Understood. But will the lighting be improved?
On Gloucester Crossing Road?
Correct. You're building walkways anticipating for additional foot traffic and you're open at night. Will the lighting be improved? Because right now, I would consider it poor.
I don't anticipate any changes to the lighting unless the DPW looks at it and wants some help with it.
Well, this is the time that we probably want to get that established.
And with the YMCA and this development here.
Other questions? Counsel Cox?
So I really want to ask about the assisted living, but as you said, you're not here to talk about the old city council special permit. You're here to, limited in scope, while you're here.
And I'll give you an answer though about it.
But that brings me to the question of the, the road maintenance agreement and stuff like that. We, none of us were here when the original city council permit came up. And we have been asked questions about why it hasn't been closed out or why it, these other things hadn't been done and updated and it's been 12 years. So I, I'm with Counsel O'Hara with the addition of that walkway, I think there needs to be additional lighting for it because you're putting in a walkway where, where there wasn't one in the original council permit. You're modifying your area because of the lower facility being proposed, which is going to increase the foot traffic to the upper facility and-
Wait, we do, the sidewalk that we're putting in does have lighting, that you're going to have, this area is going to be illuminated.
Okay. I, I thought you just said that there wasn't going to be additional lighting.
I thought that Mr. O'Hara was talking about this roadway here.
Okay.
And we're not doing anything there. The sidewalk is right here.
Right. So the, the street lighting, I think that Counsel O'Hara was referring to is on the roadway. You are saying, talking about the, the to-be-constructed walkway, which will have its own lighting.
It will have its own, own lighting.
Right.
And I, I can address a little bit about, just in passing, about the assisted living because it's not part of this. But the assisted living is this, you know, empty space here, which for the last 10 years, Mr. Park put all the infrastructure in. It's all there. You know, your sewer, your water, your electricity, all the utilities, all your infrastructure is there. He has marketed it and nobody is interested at this point. It, it's still, it's almost like land-banked for that use. And I know Mr. Lundberg talked to the mayor about it, I guess.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yes, Counsel Gilman, you have a question for the applicant?
So I was going to wait until we did the committee report to talk more about this, but one of the questions that I think would be helpful to hear from Michelle directly right now is, it took four meetings of the planning board to come to a compromise of their recommendation to the city council on the north sidewalk. Can you describe why you felt that was cost-prohibitive to do it, to do that now at the onset? And with permission from the chair, would you allow DPW Director Mike Hale to just, I mean, I'm interested in the cost because this seems to be kind of the elephant in the room right now, that, understanding what the planning board was concerned with-
Well, I think before we get to that-
-in where we are today.
That's really, we're getting into the discussion of, of what kind of conditions we want to have. If you wanted to describe the, the proposal and what P and D ultimately agreed to in the condition, you could do that right now and then we can get into all the costs and all that other stuff later. I'd like to get counselor questions about the presentation.
Okay.
I'd like to be able to ask if there's anybody else who wishes to speak in favor, there's the wish to be, and so forth. I would like to get through that. So I diverted a little bit here because there was a lot of information, factual information. So if you wanted to just point out, since Counsel Gilman raised that issue of the north sidewalk, just point out where that is, would it would be and what the resolution of that issue was before the planning board and before P and D.
This sidewalk is what we have proposed for access and this stairwell, stairway. There was question at the, the planning board. The planning board looked at it, wondered if it was possible to add a sidewalk along here. Tim prepared a conceptual plan for it. It's expensive, but there needed to be the determination whether there was a need for it or not. Just, not just, oh, wouldn't it be nice, but is there the need for it because we don't know how much foot traffic there actually will be coming from the Fuller site? So the planning board talked about it a lot. The fourth meeting was really, we could have done it at the third meeting, but there was a, a fourth meeting because of some scheduling. But the planning board recommended that there be a study done, even though the administration, I think staff wanted the sidewalk now, but the planning board voted unanimously to have a study done at the end of 12 months to determine whether the sidewalk was necessary. That's in the planning board recommendation. And then-
No.
Michelle, can you point out where the sidewalk is in question?
This is the one that exists and this one would be proposed right here. So you'd have redundancy, you'd have a sidewalk on both sides. But we're not sure that that's necessary until we see what kind of traffic gets generated from the Y and from the, the residential development.
Did the committee report? Okay. Okay, thank you. And so, all right, so now, everybody see where the, the proposed north sidewalk is?
Yes.
Got it. Okay. Anything else?
No.
Any other questions from councilors? Okay, thank you very much, Michelle. We appreciate the presentation. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the applications? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Name and address for the record, please.
Sunny Robinson and I live at 20 Harvard Street and I do not wish to speak either in favor or in opposition to the modifications that are before you tonight, but to address another, very briefly address, another de facto modification, which has not happened, which is the absence of the assisted living facility. I've had the opportunity to talk some with people in the planning board and P and D about this and have a suggestion for how we need to get this piece moving. And that would be that we form a citywide advocacy committee composed of interested citizens and public officials to try to get the assisted living piece of this proposal, of the original proposal, finally moving all these years later. I would remind people that Condition 38 on page 25 of the original application had as a condition that a assisted living developer be identified within 18 months of the beginning of construction of the retail part. So here we are, all these years later. I do not pretend that finding a developer is an easy task, but I think it is a doable task and one that I suggest that we actually get to work on. With me tonight, I had hoped would be a Gloucester resident who recently found herself in need of moving to an assisted living facility. And so she, like many other people, had to move to Ipswich. I had lunch with her there last week. She pointed out to me that a very large percentage of the residents are from Gloucester. She pointed out to me that a very large percentage of the residents are from Gloucester. She also pointed out to me the absolute need that an assisted living facility in Gloucester needs to have a substantial part of its availability at affordable rates so that, in fact, Gloucester residents can go there, since she finds herself having to pay $8,000 a month for the assisted living in which she is. So, I invite you to act on your concerns about the absence of an assisted living. Let's all get to work again and get that piece of the original proposal moving in a way that makes it available and affordable to the average Gloucester resident. And I thank you for the opportunity to address this piece of the original proposal.
Thank you, Sunny. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposi, I guess that wasn't opposition, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Okay, are there any communications, Madam Clerk?
There are none.
Okay. So, with all that, now, before we get to councillor, further questions from councillors, I will just make this comment. At, when Sunny first talked to me about the idea that she just talked to all of us about, I went to the mayor and I said, listen, Mayor, you know, the assisted living part of this has been hanging around for a long time, and, and it's still a part of the original permit. And we, as a city, should look into whether it's still a viable thing or not. And we have citizens asking to, for us to form an ad hoc committee to look into this and to see what the, the, the likelihood of success of finding a developer for the ad hoc, for the assisted living would be. Mayor agreed with me on that. Mr. Park agreed to participate with us on that. But it was, the idea was that we, as the city, would look into the, what's the possibility for assisted living, and so we are in the process of setting that up, so. Councilor Cox?
In addition to that, because the fact that the special city council permit from the first go-round indicated that it, something had to, there had to have been movement within 18 months, I would appreciate if we could see documentation from the developer on his efforts to provide an assisted living facility. And it would aid the ad hoc group to see what efforts have already been tried to provide this facility to the city of Gloucester and its residents. So, we're not, A, repeating ourselves or.
No, we'll do all that.
Being redundant in the search.
And we will, and the reason that we would do it as a city committee is not, as opposed to a request to the developer to come back to us and tell us what's going on, that we would find out what was going on as an independent committee.
Right, but I think those documents need to be provided.
Absolutely. Okay, so, other councillor questions at this point, consider, concerning the application? Well, we will get the, we'll, after we close the public hearing, we'll get the committee report, and we will hear about the conditions, and then we can have the discussion on those then. Councilor Cox?
So, I believe now would be the appropriate time to address Val's, Councilor Gilman's concerns about the north sidewalk, because I also think that a crosswalk at a roundabout isn't as good of an idea or as safe as, of an idea as having an opposite sidewalk. So, I, I'm not, I'm not entertained by the idea of doing a study a year after. I think we should move forward with the safest route and the safest possibility. We, we've all been doing this a long time, and I honestly think that, I've seen people not use a crosswalk when there's one right here and they're crossing right here. So, I think we need to put in those safe parameters for people. Do I still think people are going to cross in the middle of the roundabout? Yes, but I would like to hear more about the north sidewalk and the objections as to not doing it, the costs, all that good stuff.
Councilor Gilman?
So, I just have two factual questions without deliberating. I would, I wanted to know if Civil Engineer Tim Powers, if you have that plan that was referenced, that had been presented for the northern sidewalk? And if so, does a member of administration have that, if you don't, on you? Is that something that you could show us, number one? And the, and the second question that I have would be, can we ask our Public Works Director if he has any ideas in terms of the cost for a sidewalk? I think it's, it's all relevant to, to this.
We can certainly ask him whether he has any knowledge of that, I don't know. The applicant might have knowledge of that as well. So, what's your question?
So, my, my first question is, is there that plan that you referenced that Tim can provide for us? And my second question is, can we hear from our DPW Director in terms of the cost for that northern sidewalk?
Well, again, I'll say, since he's not an engineer for the, for the applicant, I'm not sure what knowledge our DPW Director would have of that. So, why don't you ask the applicant that question?
Okay, I asked the cost prohibitive question before, but now I will ask it. Do you have a cost breakdown of that northern sidewalk and?
We can get that to you, and then your DPW Director can review, but can I just comment on that sidewalk?
Sure.
My name's Sam Park, I'm the owner of Gloucester Crossing, 10-year reunion, I guess, since we opened the center. Relative to when we permitted this original project, we had discussed a lot of the pedestrian pathways, the idea of doing some traffic calming, which resulted in a rotary that apparently calms traffic so much that the trucks run over the mulch area on the rotary. So, we're constantly trying to fix things like that, like the Gus Foot pathway. In this particular case, the sidewalk that we built was built with lighting, a guiderail, and an overlook to the wetlands on the south side of the roadway at the recommendation of the city and the planners and our architects. So, constantly, we have lighting, sidewalk, I'm sorry, lighting, sidewalk and what have you. Anything we build, including the new walkway from that intersection, will be lit to the same standards as required for any retail or commercial development. So, the hidden costs that you face when you do a second sidewalk are one of two things. One, it's the fact, the fact that it needs to be lit, it needs to be maintained, and it needs a retaining wall because the area that we're building against is very narrow. You know, when we started this, we originally said we really couldn't provide a stair system up to that roadway because of the steep grade. If you're up there today and you notice how steep that grade is, is trying to build along the side of an embankment, it's not a very easy feature. Our engineers were able to get to it, and we actually liked the plan. We've done that type of design before, and it actually is very attractive, and that's why we, and when we were asked to do that walkway slash stair combination, we actually added in some amenities to make it feel less long by both breaking down the stairs, essentially a stair ramp, because that's the only way you can meet grade. I think it's also important to recognize that our goal is not to just get people to a coffee shop or to that pharmacy. Our goal is to get people to the heart of the center, which is where the rotary is, is where Fire Pizza is, where the pizza place is, where Sam Conti's Liquor Store, Market Basket and what have you. So, the whole center, the actual center of the center, the there, there, is actually Gus Foot pathway. And so, for us, that's all part of the system. Now, I know there's some interest in having a sidewalk on both sides of the roadway, and we don't necessarily think it's a bad idea if it's truly needed. The problem for us is it means lights, it means a retaining wall, and it means running electric conduit down a roadway that has a very tight corridor between there and the backside of the, the new retail building. And for us to place that financial burden on what is basically a downsizing of a 10,000 square foot pharmacy or bank building and a coffee shop that is relatively small is not, is almost economically infeasible. So, now, if it turns out that, you know, at the end of the day, we see there's foot traffic, we will come to, you know, we will come up with the cash to do it through operating cost once we have it. But for us to finance an improvement that's not warranted right now is very difficult, especially since it's got to be financed on two small buildings.
Okay. Thank you. Any other councillor questions about the application? Councillor O'Hara?
I don't know who would like to answer this question, but to the rotary? Yes, roundabout. Right now, it's 40 feet and trailer trucks are driving over it. We see that, I've seen it. My concern is just being up there with the additional, and, and this is, to Mr. Park, as far as you're going to have increased traffic. They do travel quite fast. My concern, and particularly, we're talking crosswalks, people want to get to their destination with, are you going to have, as far as in that rotary, reducing it to 20 feet? How, how can, are you going to have, I understand you want to be able to move truck traffic over it without going over the physical curbing, which is now probably about six inch. Is that going, that 40-foot perimeter?
Yeah, what we actually did is we, you might see some of the tire marks, we just ran some semis around it just to confirm where it is, and it happens. If you've been up there, the actual landscaping is essentially the smaller rotary design that's going to be implemented. The part that the trucks are running over is really from the sweep is where the mulch bed is. And it's mulched because every time we plant something there, it gets crushed. So, the concept is what we basically done another project recently, is we would basically put a rumble, change that curbing to a rumble strip that would be decorative, such as red brick or what have you, along with the matching red brick sidewalks around that intersection, so that the occasional truck that has to sweep by it is sweeping over on rumble strip versus over mulch and curb. And so, the, the engineers have, you know, unfortunately, it was a great idea to traffic calm it, it was originally a four-way stop sign, and the roadway ran actually straight through to the parking lot where Sam Conti's Liquor Store is. So, the idea of doing traffic calming was there to sort of actually slow traffic down. And I think the two things that I would say we goofed on was my poor choice in colors of trying to show granite, which is a cape and color, versus red brick. And so, we are in the process now of, once all of our construction traffic is done, we will be re-striping and delineating with both white bar and red paint, the new pedestrian crossways all in sort of a red brick pedestrian red. And so, the answer to your question is yes. The additional 10 feet of rumble strip, which will clearly not be travelway for your typical motorist, will allow the occasional truck to turn it. I believe we're actually including an inset curb just to create the perception that you shouldn't be driving on the red brick. Unfortunately, it doesn't require, so eliminate any of the more decorative softscape or the greenscape in the middle, because that's actually within the, that's never run over, it's just the mulch side around it, so.
My, my concern, and I've heard from constituents, as far as the cars that do speed, even with the 40-foot, potentially reducing it to 20-foot without having a raised curb that would potentially damage their vehicle. So, reducing it to 20 even with a rumble strip, the potential speed, and then now we're, now we're talking foot traffic. It lends itself to not a good situation.
We have, in addition to the red brick crosswalks, and we, we share those concerns, we've maybe learned a few things. If, you know, another project we did on 495, and Littleton has rotaries that have different striping markings, white lines and what they call shark teeth, which delineate, you know, essentially a yield stop condition. It's unfortunate, but the, the overall dimension of that is very constrained, both because of the edge of the cliff going down to the wetlands, as well as the curb line. So, if, you know, for any reason, it's still, you know, we want our customers to be safe. If it turns out to be an issue after we've delineated with shark teeth and white stop bars and the correct color pavement markings, you know, we might have to come back to you and say, in that event, let's change it back to a stop sign. We just don't know if a stop sign works well, given the turns that people make. So, I think we're going to focus on the signage, trying to improve the signage, perhaps some, they call them shark teeth, for lack of a better term. But as you approach, you would actually see these triangular stop edges that sort of say it's time to stop before entering the rotary. And I think that'll help a lot, but at the end of the day, the biggest concern we've and, is the fact that the mulch bed and trucks turning wide make a problem for, just physically impossible for a W-40 to make it. I don't know if that answers it or not, but we are, we're going to solve that problem regardless of the permit, candidly, so it is what it is, we need to fix it.
Thank you.
Councilor Cox, go ahead. Move.
Whose idea was it for the staircase versus the sidewalk? Why would you go with the stairs versus just the regular sidewalk on both sides?
There was a request to see if we could get from the lower level to the upper level, and when you look at the length of a normal ramp, it's the same length as our sidewalk system. And in fact, one of the reasons we built the sidewalk when we did on phase one was the south sidewalk actually is ADA compliant. So, when we went to build this, it is clearly constrained. In fact, we actually, our first position was, we don't think you can fit it, other than a straight staircase up to the corner. And then the issue of bringing pedestrians up a stairwell to the backside of a drive-thru was a little bit unattractive, if not people thought an issue. So, then we tried to stretch the stairwell out, and that's what we ended up with, and so.
But whose, whose idea was it? Was it like a condition from the planning board to make this happen, or was it just a?
I came up with the design, if that helps.
No, that, at the planning board, they, there was a recommendation to make more of a statement entrance, so that, you know, now when you just go in, you see some signage, but, you know, and you get the roundabout, but if, when you go in this way, it's going to be more of a, a statement, it's going to be landscaped, you're going to see an entrance, there will be some signage, you know, that it's Gloucester Crossing, and so it's going to have, I can't say anything more than a statement, you're going to have, you're going to know you're going to the, to the shopping center then, rather than just going into the roundabout. It's attractive.
If I can just interject, I think Councilor Cox is asking for the practicalities of a sidewalk versus a stairway and not so much about.
Right, so here's my takeaway. You have one entrance that's not handicap accessible, and you have another that could be, and the sidewalk versus the stairs, so this is, this is where I'm going. Sidewalk, I'm sorry, the stairs, not handicap accessible, it seems like it's more of a cost burden to make the stairs than it is to do the sidewalk. I personally would be more amenable to ditching the staircase and doing the sidewalk for safety reasons, and I don't know about you, but I'm, I'm not very interested in walking up the stairs to go to the back of a building where I know there's cars driving through. You're putting, I think it's more harm than good. The sidewalk, to me, I've been up there recently, and I, I looked at the, the distance between the road and the wall, and I would beg to differ on the retaining wall need because there's, there's a lot of flat land right off the road versus where you start with the embankment.
It's not fully embanked yet, we stopped short of where the, if you look at where the Yasp and Dental Embankment is, that's extending all the way.
That area, okay, that corner, I could see the retaining wall.
We're happy to look at that as an alternative. I think, my hope, this will get me in trouble, my, candidly, we have, you know, a certain amount that we can finance two small buildings. My hope is that once everything is leased up, we're going to build a sidewalk just because customers want it. That's not a, a great assurance to anyone, but I think those who have known us for 10 years, anytime there's been a need that's been identified, whether it's an expansion of a Gus Foot pathway or something else, we've just done it. The difficulty for us is we can't load more infrastructure or operating costs on the two small buildings, it just won't support it. However, once the rent streams are flowing in from, it's just a practical reality, it's a different mechanism. I would like to see the footpath needed because I'm not sure, I think 80, 90% of the patrons that would be using it, when you really look at the overall analysis, are able to navigate the short ramp step system that we've come up with. But I defer to you, it could be very much that some people would disagree and would rather have the walkway that goes up by the rotary on the other side.
Right, and I agree with you, I mean, it is just my opinion that, the safety factor alone with adding the sidewalk versus pushing people up the south side to a cross. pushing people up the south side to a crosswalk in the middle of a busy intersection that people can't traverse right now without going through the center of it. And you're pushing a lot more trailer trucks through there because you have more additional retailers.
We're actually reducing the traffic at the rotary just because of the elimination of the hotel. And so at the end of the day, there was less traffic actually going through the rotary, through our roundabout with this proposed modification.
I'm just, that might be true, but I'm talking about the fact that you, you didn't have a hotel up there at the time.
Yes.
And the roundabout is already problematic as the tire tracks entail. And now you're adding Home Goods, Starbucks, CVS retailers. So, I mean.
Practically, yes. There will be more traffic from our.
You're adding more traffic up there than what was there as of right now with no hotel and no other buildings. So, I don't know. That's just my opinion. I do have to say that you guys have been great to work with. I've been the ward counselor since, well, two years after Gus left. And everything that I needed assistance with, you guys were right there to take care of. So I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Other questions? Counselor Gilman?
I'm sorry, but I'm going to ask again because you had made a comment that you wouldn't have a problem if someone from the Public Works Department might know what the cost is for the northern sidewalk. Would you?
We can actually give you an estimate and we're happy to have Mike review it if, just for validated.
Well, it's just, we're trying to be able to move forward with the conditions in this permit. And if we're not prepared to do that because we have missing data, then we might not be able to have that.
We're going to have missing data if that's the case. Mike Hale is not qualified to give a comment on the cost of construction of that. He's not the applicant. He can comment on what the applicant gives to us, but he cannot be the applicant. So we're not going to permit that.
So, so let me, NASA follow-up question. Somebody in the planning board mentioned that you had, that you had thought that it would cost about a hundred thousand dollars.
I think that's about right.
Okay. So that, that's.
It's not just, just to be clear, it's not just the five-foot asphalt pavement that we could extend down there. It's the fact that once you do the five-foot thing and try to maintain the two-on-one slopes back to the back of the, quite candidly, we were trying to make sure that we didn't have everything just too stacked on top of each other. But if you look at the grade slope and the potential need for the four-to-eight-foot high wall in certain locations along that walkway, that adds a little bit. And then when you add on top of that, if we build a pedestrian walkway, we will have to light it. Everything we build is well lit. And for the darkness that's there today, it's mostly because the current area is under construction. So many of the poles that we had up supporting sort of the far lot were taken down for construction. But it's, at the end of the day, the rest of the light will be lit with the same LED night sky stuff that the rest of the center is built on. So the lighting requires suddenly a conduit, pull boxes and what have you so that the poles are every fifty feet. Melissa's comment about is it cheaper to build the sidewalk than the new gateway entrance? Probably. I do think the YMCA likes the gateway entrance for their own reasons. Right? So, you know, I think it's, it's six or half, you know, at the end of the day, I would hope that maybe it's proven that the, I personally, having been a traffic engineer in my past life, I believe the south sidewalk will suffice for the demand. If I'm wrong, I guess I'll put my money where my mouth is. I'll fix it. I just don't know how else to reference it.
I have one more question.
Yes.
I know I'm being a pain. So.
By the way, it's actually a hundred and fifty-five thousand to build the thing because I think our engineers already estimated when they add in the lighting and the other detail and the ADA ramps.
So in any of your developments?
Yes.
Have you ever taken a sidewalk and made it a raised sidewalk to, in order to use that as a way to slow down the traffic coming out of the rotary that will immediately be a, or just coming right up to that only sidewalk for a person that is handicap or with a baby carriage or with a bicycle? I mean, so my question to you is have you used successfully that type? Because that's not a municipal road. That's owned by you, that road, right? That leads off the rotary? So have you ever been successful with that type of a raised sidewalk as an alternative to safely get people across the road as a deterrent to people speeding coming out of the rotary?
Yes. And actually in Littleton, we have, one of those has been built, one of them is getting built, but it's almost the same configuration. It's not a race crosswalk, if that's the question. It's a, it's a, it's a flush crosswalk, but it's painted in red brick. It's pressed in so the bricks look like bricks and it's actually designed so that it doesn't disturb snowplows and other maintenance issues. But what is working very well is the fact that when you add in the so-called shark teeth and the white delineation markings, which we don't have there today, it makes a huge difference. It's a relatively new standard that Mass Highway has even come up with on many of its state's rotaries. This, I probably shouldn't know this much as a developer, but it is what it is. So the white delineations work very well in combination with the decorative pedestrian crosswalk stuff. The gray crosswalks that we implemented probably don't work well because they don't create enough delineation between car space and pedestrian space.
So. Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor questions? With that, I will close the public hearing and I'm going to ask for the committee report. Do you want, do you have anything else you wanted to say? Oh, okay. You're just cold. So are we. And we've asked Bob to turn the heat on, so hopefully.
Give it for a minute.
Yeah, well, text him again. So.
Four hours will be great.
Yeah. So we're going to call for the committee report. Again, since we're a little bit out of, out of our normal procedures, we're going to, this is the committee report for the motion of the amendment to eliminate the hotel. It really also applies to the other two. When we get to the conditions, there are forty-five conditions. I think there's only six maybe that are, of the forty-five, most of them came from the original special permit. And I'm going to, with the councilor's agreement, we're going to waive the reading of the stuff that's just a repeat and just focus on the five or so conditions that we've slightly modified. And there are two that are of particular interest that, with the discussion, we have an, we have a condition on the sidewalk slash stairway discussion and we have one on the road maintenance agreement. So when we get to those conditions, we can have council discussion on that. So, so for, and then I'm going to ask for the reading of the first motion as well as the conditions, the conditions that we want to, that are different from the original. Are you following me?
For the retail shop?
For the.
The drive-through?
Yeah, because, no, the drive-through has two small conditions that just apply to it.
Okay.
These conditions that I'm talking about are ones that are going to apply to all three.
Right. So we're going to start with the third.
And we're going to start with the conditions that apply to the, to the elimination of the hotel. Those conditions will also apply to all three.
Exactly.
And then of the two drive-throughs, one of them has a couple of additional small conditions for it specifically. And then I'm asking, we're not going to read all the forty-five conditions.
No, I understand that.
Just the ones that, that we need to discuss. And what I'm saying to councilors is that two of the conditions, one applies to the sidewalk. And one for the road maintenance to discuss. So we'll be able to discuss those in detail when we have council discussion. So I'm calling for the committee report with all of that.
Thank you. On a motion by Counselor Holmgren seconded by Counselor Lundberg, the Planning and Development Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that the city council grant a modification of a special counsel permit, special counsel permit 2018-007 to Sam Park and Company LLC, owned by Gloucester Commons LLC, for property located at number one and number seven Gloucester Crossing Road, map 262, lots thirteen and thirty-seven pursuant to GZO Sections 1.5.3, Section C, comma, 1.8.3, CCS special permits, and D, major projects in 5.7, major projects in the extensive business district to modify the permitted shopping center on the site with the conditions herewith attached. This application for a special counsel permit is found to be in harmony with the purpose and intent of the Gloucester zoning ordinance. Before we move that motion, I'd like to read those conditions that have modifications. Item number one, condition number one, the project shall be constructed in accordance with the following record plans or is subsequently approved by the city council through minor modification or amendment, which are in file with the planning board and the city clerk's office. Proposed development, Mass Route 128, Gloucester, Mass issued for permit review 218 dot 10 dot 01, revised 2018 point 12 17, those are dates, prepared for Gloucester Commons LLC, prepared by Land Strategies, 337 School Street, Suite 200, Mansfield, Mass, 02048 zip code, 24 sheets stamped by Timothy J. Power, P.E., here and after referred to as the record plans. That's number one. Number two, the project shall be limited to the buildings and improvements shown on the record plans, a shopping center composed of buildings A, B, C1, C2, D, E, and F, an assisted living facility, Building H, and two drive-through facilities, Buildings C2 and E. Due to the concerns regarding stormwater generation, any proposed changes which would result in an increase in the footprint of the project should be reviewed following the procedures outlined further in these conditions. Next is item seventeen. I would ask that I only read seventeen F because that's the only one that was amended.
Yes.
Established bicycle facilities, including exterior bicycle racks and bicycle storage in a reasonably accessible location. Moving right along, number eighteen, modification, a transportation coordinator shall be appointed and responsible for managing the TDM program for three years after the full build-out. Here's the addition, newly hired transportation coordinators must be introduced to the planning director and building inspector within thirty days of their appointment. I'm almost done. Item thirty-two, the applicant shall annually request that the Gloucester Police and Fire Department provide to the city council on February first, the actual number of emergency 911 calls to the Gloucester Police and Fire Departments during the prior calendar year. Item number thirteen, in accordance with the order of conditions issued by the Gloucester Conservation Commission, the applicant shall be responsible for monitoring the vernal pools for water quality, mid habitat impacts for a period of five years. Any required mitigation for wetland impact shall be initiated or constructed prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Item A, applicant agrees to plant sufficient trees at the agreed-upon locations as noted in the record plans to mitigate the littering and blowing of trash from the two drive-through locations. Item B, all landscaping for each building shall be installed not less than one year from date of issuance of any of the building occupancy permits in Phase Two. All planting material shall be maintained and replaced due to the mortality or damage by snowstorms or snow removal, droughts, or lack of maintenance. Item number C, any project major modification shall be constructed in compliance with the order of conditions issued by the Gloucester Conservation Commission. A certificate of compliance shall be issued prior to the final occupancy permit for Phase Two. Item thirty-eight, which is a condition related to pedestrian circulation and road maintenance, within twelve months of the full build-out and first issued occupancy permits for Gloucester Crossing, the YMCA and housing units located within the adjacent Fuller Site, Sam Park and Company shall fund a study by an independent traffic engineer to evaluate the need for a second sidewalk on the north side of Gloucester Crossing's access road as noted above. At a minimum, said study shall evaluate pedestrian utilization during both winter and summer conditions. If the findings reveal a documented need for the second sidewalk, Sam Park and Company will finalize the completion of the sidewalk within six months from said determination. Item A, and this will have to be amended based on what the applicant requested, or it doesn't have to be, we should consider, the pedestrian accommodations described in Condition Two of the special permit, including the accessible ramps and crosswalks across Gloucester Crossing Road and Gloucester Crossing Access Drive and the pedestrian walkways leading up to the Gloucester Crossing site at the main entrance, shall be installed prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for either of the C2 or E buildings. B, all crosswalks will be painted in a highly visible color prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. All crosswalks will have adequate signage for pedestrian passage. Thirty-nine, the city will enter into a road maintenance agreement with the applicant for Schoolhouse Road and Gloucester Crossing. And I shall, I so move. Second.
So moved and seconded, just for the record, that by reference, we'll incorporate all of the unread conditions?
So move.
Okay. Good, thank you. Okay. So now we have, we have the motion and as the, so do you want to give the, is there a committee report on, how do you want to proceed with that?
Yeah, I have a brief committee report.
Okay.
I just wanted to summarize. Our P and D committee met on January third, 2019. At that point, the planning board had had four meetings in preparation. They requested that the city council should conduct a careful review of the original conditions of the shopping center, special permit, and host community agreement. A review was presented from the applicant and at the meeting, Planning and Development asked the administration to do the same in terms of review of the original conditions. Realizing that the emphasis in the safe connectivity of the pedestrian passage between Fuller mixed-use venture to Gloucester Crossing, we scheduled a site visit on January eleventh, 2019. Six of nine counselors attended. Civil engineer Tim was there as well as Michelle. On January seventeenth, 2019, P and D met again and agreed, and agreed on the conditions brought forward. We highlighted what we saw during the site visit. We reviewed the proposed conditions that administration presented, made modifications as a subcommittee, and voted three to zero to recommend these conditions for special counsel permit 2018-007. What is here before us tonight is our applicant is seeking relief from our council and that's what we're here to decide. My feeling as a committee chair is that the interconnectivity is really important to the future of this project. And I appreciate the concerns that you brought forward in terms of safe passage because this is important to us. What we want to do tonight is do it safe and right, both for the people that we represent on the city council, for visitors, and for economic reasons as well. But I am sensitive to the pedestrian safety. So that's my committee report.
Okay.
And then at some point, I have a small amendment, but we can move forward.
So I think because of the complexity of this, before we start to offer amendments, I would like to get a sense from the council that we've got, there is a, there is a motion to, on, which is. to, on, which is to amend the special council, the existing council permit to eliminate the hotel. That's the main motion, and there are all these conditions. And with the exception of, I'm going to just say thirty-eight, which is the crosswalk, sidewalk issue, and thirty-nine, the road maintenance agreement, that everything else seems to be okay. So we can set everything else aside for a moment and focus on those two. So if everybody's okay with that, then let's have some counselor discussion about those two issues before we get to offering amendments, because I think, because if we're going to offer amendments about either of those, they're going to be wicked technical, and we may need to do some consideration on that. So let's, but let's get a sense of the council on those two issues about what we want. So Counselor Cox, you raising your hand? Not to you.
Ladies first.
Ladies first. I will use that all day long.
Oh.
All right. So I'm going to still continue to harp on the sidewalk versus stairs. I, the road maintenance agreement is also, I'd like, I want to discuss that, I want to, but I think there's some other people that can tackle that better than me. I still, I would like to see more discussion regarding sidewalk versus stairs. It seems to me that this was asked of the developer to make a statement entrance and not really a thought of the process of handicap accessibility and safety. I feel like we have a show horse when we just need a pony. I, I don't know how to explain it better than that. It's just, one is not handicap accessible and one doesn't offer alternate routes. But the sidewalk offers handicap accessibility and alternate routes. So I, I'm almost willing to ask that this go back to P and D for further discussion on, on just that factor alone.
Okay. Counselor Holmgren.
At P and D, well, I did also ask about the stairs and why there wasn't a north sidewalk at the January third meeting, and we discussed the switchback ramp and the sidewalk on the north side of the YMCA. I did, the thought did not cross my mind until tonight that we could ask for the developer to eliminate the staircase. I mean, I realize that there would need to be costs and calculations, but I work with people who use wheelchairs, and I work with people who have disabilities every single day, and I would be grateful if, if the developer would be willing to relook at that, and I thank Counselor Cox for asking about that.
I would definitely prefer to see the sidewalk done first and the staircase done through a study, personally.
Counselor Gilman.
I actually like that suggestion. So my issue that I am just, I cannot get over is I stood at that point of where that sidewalk was crossing over from the southern sidewalk, crossing over the crosswalk to get to where a person on a wheelchair or a bicycle or carriage. The benefit of having the different crosswalks at that stop sign where the two roads intersect is where the safe crossing should occur. The idea of having a crosswalk up fifty feet from a rotary where these cars are going fast and maybe even faster with some of the trucks because it's going to be easier for them to navigate around is a big, big concern for me. And waiting for, you know, for this study and everything else is problematic because our job today is to really look at what's safe for the people that we represent, for visitors that are becoming to Gloucester Crossing, and we want to make this linkage to Fuller Mixed Use and Gloucester Crossing to be a win-win. And I am just, I'm, 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 I'm actually losing sleep over the thought of, of not having that northern sidewalk. So I appreciate Counselor Cox's suggestion and Counselor Holmgren's suggestion that maybe we do need to send this back for a little bit more, for just another round of conversations to come up with something that we can agree with, but we're almost there. We've done everything but thirty-eight and thirty-nine, and when we're ready to talk about thirty-nine, I have a couple of thoughts. Thank you.
Okay. Further on the sidewalk issue, Counselor Nolan.
I'd like to make a motion that we do send this back to committee. I'm not happy with the non-existent road maintenance agreement. We don't have one figured out yet. I want to know what the agreement's going to be, what it's going to cost. It isn't a new council permit. The sidewalk, I think, has to happen. People are asking for it. We don't need the staircase, but we were telling people, we can make it easier if you can walk, but if you're going to stroll through something, you're going to go through a maze in a rotary in a wheelchair. So I think that I would like to make a motion to send this back to committee, and I'd like to have a condition of road maintenance agreement through the administration presented to us before we vote any further on this.
So before we entertain that motion, I'd like to hear from other counselors on, on either of these issues. Counselor Holmgren.
Regarding the, the road maintenance agreement, it was my understanding that this was between the administration and the developer, and it was not signed by Mayor Kirk, and it should have been taken up by administration. Now, that may be erroneous on my part, but I would like a little clarification on that.
So let me just fill in some of the blanks here. First of all, the road maintenance agreement issue hasn't been presented to the council by anybody. It hasn't been presented by the administration. It hasn't been presented by the applicant. We don't know. We've, we're getting a lot of, you know, hearsay, but we haven't had a proper presentation about the status of that and whether there is an agreement that's necessary or not. I don't, I don't even know the answer to that. If there's further agreement necessary, we, we just don't know. And the administration needs to tell us what their particular position is about that. Is there some undone business that the administration hasn't been able to get done? Not that I know of, but perhaps they have a different story, but we haven't been able to consider that. As far as the sidewalk goes, and, you know, I kind of agree with Counselor Cox's initial observation, you know, our only concern here is, is the safety of the development and the, you know, the infrastructure and the idea of a, you know, gateway entrance and all that, that's really none of our business. That's the developer's business, and it, and if it's something that the developer and the new neighbors across the street need to work out amongst themselves, great, let them work it out. What we're concerned about is access to the site that's safe and all that, and I think we've heard a couple of suggestions tonight, but we don't, you know, we don't have a engineering design, we don't have anything on that either, which we should have before we make a further recommendation. So I'm, I'm kind of of a mind that Counselor Nolan just outlined. I think there are two things that we need from, from both the administration and the applicant before we can consider, because I think everything else is pretty much done, and I think the applicant can know that, and that we're agreeable to the overall concept of eliminating the hotel and replacing it and so forth. We don't have to commit to that, but I'm getting a sense. But with those two issues, I think we need further clarification. So you have made a motion to return this to, and do I have a second?
He seconded like an hour ago.
Yeah, but I ignored his second because. I ignored me all night. Right. And, and then, just hold on a second. And we can do that with, with some instruction to the applicant and to the administration. Yes. Ms. Harrison, you wish to comment on that?
Yes, if it's the, exclamation point, if it's the, the will of the council that you'd rather see the sidewalk than the stairs, we can agree with doing the sidewalk rather than the stairs, and then later on, perhaps, working with a neighbor, do the, the grander entrance. That's, I mean, if more people prefer the sidewalk, we'll do the sidewalk rather than the stairs.
Right. But again, I don't want us making this decision in a vacuum. So I think that what we'd like to have is a proper proposal about that. And I'd also like to suggest that the administration and the applicant give us the, give us, and I, before we make a condition that says, you know, enter into a road maintenance agreement or else, or whatever we're going to say, we've got to know what the issues are, and we don't know what those issues are from the pre, and, and I think counselors are correct, if there are some undone, some loose ends from the original special permit, we need to know, we need to get them done up. We just don't know what they are.
And I will say in, in response to that, Counselor, that the roadway maintenance agreement was signed by Mr. Park, and he's been performing under it. The host community agreement was signed by all parties, and it talks about the roadway maintenance agreement in the form that is attached as the exhibit, and that's what we've been following that form, so, and we're happy to.
But again.
Have the city sign it also.
Again, you know, that's, thank you for saying that, and I'm, but, but I think we need a little more definition about that issue from both the applicant and the administration as to what are the issues? Are there outstanding issues and what are, you know, we're not going to just make a blind recommend, condition on, on the road maintenance agreement without understanding what the condition, the, the issues are.
I'd like to see a copy of it.
Counselor.
I would like to suggest that we see a plan of what this would look like in terms of, you know, you're going to be, the possibility of us agreeing to eliminating the stairs and the grand entrance, to narrowing that down to the northern sidewalk in the other parameters that Mr. Park discussed today, that would be helpful for that meeting. And I also agree that the conversation between the administration and the applicant on the road maintenance agreement would be helpful so we can be prepared to push forward, condition thirty-nine.
So I don't know that there's any reason this can't be done at our next P and D meeting. These two issues brought back to us as we've outlined them, what we'd like to see, and then we can make a determination and be back at the city council at our next meeting. How's that sound to everybody?
So we're not going to go back to P and D but be here?
No, we would go back to P and D with these two issues on the sidewalk and the, what, what is the, give us a, a condition that says, or that we'll make a condition that says that there will be a sidewalk and there won't be a stairway. We need you to tell us that.
Okay.
And, and, and the plan.
And we do have the plan drawn.
The plan, and then we need an understanding about the condition. Our condition right now about the road maintenance agreement says there will be a road maintenance agreement. That's really not enough for us. We need to know what the issues are between the city and the applicant on the road maintenance obligations, let's call it that, and what the resolution is. And we want a resolution. We don't want, we're not going to agree to a condition that says we're going to hold up building permits until there's an agreement. We're going to, we'd like to see the agreement next week at P and D.
I've made that suggestion to meet.
Good. So, so with that, with those understandings, before the council votes, I just want everybody shaking their head that we'll go back to P and D next week on those two issues, and we've all discussed what we'd like to see, and then we'll come back here at our next meeting. Counselor Cox?
I know you guys have had four meetings at Planning Board, and now this, and we're asking you to come back. You guys also continued the meeting or the public hearing for whatever reason, I'm not sure why it didn't happen in the last city council meeting, but I understand.
That's because the planning board wasn't ready.
Okay. So I understand that your time is valuable, his time is valuable. I want to respect that, but we have one shot at this, and I'd rather do it the right way. I don't know if this is going to be, as far as the sidewalk goes, if it's going to be more cost-effective for you or not. Like, there's give and take, and there's compromise, and I, I just want to be able to have that conversation with you. My apologies for not being able to attend the last P and D meeting. I had these questions then, and I didn't, I wasn't able to be there. Otherwise, I would have raised before that, but I, it's not just the one issue. You know, Lord knows, Sam has been here several times, and I want to respect your guys' time as well, but these are important aspects that we need to cover.
So with that, the, the motion is that we return the special city council permits twenty eighteen double oh five, double oh six and double oh seven to P and, P and D at their, for their next meeting, and to return to the city council at our next meeting with the recommendation from P and D as we've outlined in the record. So that's, that's the motion. You, Counselor LeBlanc, would you like to make that motion?
It's funded. It's already done. Second.
Okay. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Okay. So that.
You give me those dates if you have them. February sixth is P and D or city council. February sixth, and city council is the twelfth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Next order of business is the update of the animal advisory committee by city council representative, Counselor Jen Holmgren.
Counselor Holmgren.
Thank you. So the biggest news regarding animals is the upcoming piping plover season, which city administration heads have met with and talked about plans going forward to help the city protect this threatened species, which has been making its home on Good Harbor Beach for the past few years. So Mr. Distino has led just about every single department head in several meetings to tackle this issue with a multi-pronged approach, including DPW Director Hale, Police Chief McCarthy, Conservation Agent Ken Whitaker, and Planning Director Jill Cahill. And I want to thank you all very much. Mr. Distino invited myself and Alicia Pensarosa, the Chair of the Animal Advisory Committee, to several of these meetings. Alicia's background on wildlife on the North Shore is extensive, and I trust her opinion and the opinions of the others on the Animal Advisory Committee with regard to addressing the best way to help protect the piping plovers who nest on Good Harbor Beach. So we discussed best practices regarding keeping them safe and what city staff and volunteers will need to do in the future. A plan will be unveiled by city administration, I believe, in February or March, and these meetings and strategies being implemented were based on concerns raised and recommendations by the Animal Advisory Committee and by constituents. The next AAC meeting will be on the twenty-fourth, this coming Thursday, in the first floor conference room at six thirty PM. Thank you.
Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Is Counselor's request to the mayor.
Or anything else? Counselor Gilman, do you have anything?
I just want to commend the DPW for doing an awesome job on the storm. I know that they were working twenty-four-seven, and I think that, that we need to just thank them for doing a great job in a horrible storm.
Thank you. Counselor O'Hara.
I just want to mimic what Counselor Gilman has already said pertaining to the DPW. I also want to ask the administration to consider finding funds to hope that the DPW can purchase some reliable and additional equipment to fight nasty weather such as we've just gone through. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Holmgren.
Nothing further at this time, thank you.
Thank you.
Except, actually, I apologize, I want to thank Counselor Gilman for all the work that she's done on Gloucester Crossing. It's been very difficult, and I, I know that you're trying to walk a tightrope, and we do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Very nice. Counselor Memhard.
Again, this is a challenging icy winter storm that we had, and it's not going to get any better tomorrow when we get some rain on top of the ice that we have, and I know DPW's been out clearing drains. East Gloucester and all the hills were very. East Gloucester and all the hills were very glazed over, just like I'm sure everywhere else in the city were, and the DPW did a remarkable job. A lot of citizen frustration, but we've survived it. I haven't heard of any casualties, so that's good. And right after the Animal Advisory Committee on Thursday, the 24th, City Councilor Ward 1, Scott Memhardt, is pouring beer at the Cape Am Brewery in support of Maritime Gloucester, and we have live music, and I hope it'd be a good, good way to warm up a cold night. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Nolan?
I want to talk about the job the DPW did too. They are working with all their equipment. It's not just the guys that work in the road, but the offices, the people on the phone, the mechanics, Mike, sorry, Ron, Rob, and Tim, they've been down there a long time. They work a lot of hours, try to keep things going to the best of their ability with the budget they have. Over 30 years, I've had experience working in the snow. This storm was probably one of the worst ones I've seen on trying to contain the icing. It was next to impossible, and like someone said earlier, this is probably going to be the most expensive five inches that we've ever gotten in Gloucester.
Thank you. Counselor Cox?
I want to thank DPW for all their hard work. It was all hands on deck, and then also dealing with water main issues on top of it. Quick response to the neighbors that were without water, so I do appreciate that. There is a parking lot between, or on Main Street where the old animal shelter was. It's the Gloucester Housing Authority Lot, and through our agreement with them to use that as a parking lot, there are supposed to be multiple handicap spots. Those used to sit in a cement can with the handicap sign. Right now, the parking lot is a sheet of ice, but since the building that was there was renovated, I have not seen those handicap spots. If we could make them a permanent fixture until the lease is up, I would appreciate that, because we all know that they can be moved, and that is part of our agreement, so it should be in there permanently, semi-permanently.
Good. Thank you. And I'll just echo everyone's remarks on the DPW. We did a pretty good job. It was an odd storm, and it was really a rough recovery, so they did a great job. And with that, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All right.